Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 4th, 2010 City of Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moisio.
Present.
Alderman Figueroa.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman Needham. Alderman Larson.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Okay, could you please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. I have no mayor's comments this evening. I just want to let everybody know that there will be an executive session following the alderman's time, and after that executive session, we will come back into regular session. But essentially, once we go into executive session, the meeting is, for all extent and purposes, over with. So, just want to apprise you of that. We'll go to audience time. First up, we have Mr. Ben H. Grimes, 606 Evergreen Court, Waukegan, Illinois. Ben?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. To our aldermen, other office holders, I just came out tonight to publicly thank the mayor. He came through one of our faith and others in our faith council meetings back in May of 2009 and said, "As the schools go, so does the city." And that's been very true and very evident. And I rise tonight to thank several of your city officials for the great help and assistance they've given us, starting with the mayor, and then our chief, both chiefs, especially Chief Greathouse, who has gone way beyond the call of duty. He was at our Waukegan Schools Board Meeting last Tuesday to, for the school to approve their part of the crossing guard, you know, process, if you will, and you'll do it tonight. But he really, really helps. Also, my aldermen and my good, good friend Greg Moisio, who has been an educator here for over 20 years, who goes way beyond the duty of an alderman. If we have a block party, or we have a raccoon problem, as he knows, he might laugh at this one, he's there. He's there for everything. And the fire department shows up with their great officers, they even partake of, you know, the food we're serving. Yeah, they do. And we appreciate it. And Mo, as everybody affectionately calls him, you know, we almost lost him, thank God we didn't, but he quietly intercedes on the behalf of the city to contact both chiefs, the mayor, and to get things done. Cuts through a lot of red tape. If they only believed him, we'd be okay. And I want to thank our treasurer, Dr. Schwab, who volunteers so much, Alderman Figueroa, who comes out for career fairs and other things, Alderman Sam Cunningham, who religiously comes to our faith council meeting. I see Rick all the time. Rick is probably doing some other things in there trying to make a living, but he's there. And just really, the city itself, I think we're making tons of progress in our district. We're on the way up, we're doing great things, and we need to accentuate all the positive things, because our kids, it's all about the kids. Thank you.
Sure.
The biggest guy, David Motley. Wayne, you should be very, very proud. He is your PR guy in ours, and he is the intermediary. We've been working on getting agreements, intergovernmental agreements, if you will, with the Park District, Main Street, the township, the city, the county, and everybody, because everybody has limited resources to share resources, to share in-con type things, the Park District. And so, we've been working quietly on that, and we'll get it done one day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate that.
Your Honor?
Yes, alderman.
I usually don't comment during, but thank you, Ben, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Alderman Tempest, because everything I've learned of rodent control and removal, I've learned from him. Thank you, Coach.
Have you got, have you got a medical release to be chasing those raccoons around by any chance?
Hey.
Not yet.
Anything to keep the cost down for animal control, I'll do it.
Okay. Ms. Lucy Hernandez, 3301 Stonegate. Could you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
Hi, good night. My name is Lucy Hernandez. I live in 3301 Stonegate. I have almost 60, 17 years with my daycare home, and right now, I am trying to open my own daycare center. They are the three teachers who want to work with me. And then, I finished my college, and I am making my bachelor degree. And then, they are licensing by DCFS. All us has license from DCFS, and then, we are founded a really good place to open the daycare center for the kids for 60087 zoning, and then, for the reason, we are here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Abram Figueroa Jr., on West Marlin. Mr. Figueroa, do you have your street address, please?
Your Honor, I put that on there. He's not related, by the way, but his son just got back from Iraq. I thought they were going to be here at 7:00. I asked him, maybe they changed their mind, so, but they were just going to go, and we were going to thank him for his service, but he's not here.
We'll get him next time.
All right.
Okay, good. All right. Artith Lane, 708 Cedar. Artith Lane?
Don't be bashful.
And is that Ms. Bullet?
This is Janie Bullet.
Okay.
She says she doesn't speak well, but I don't either. My name is Janie Bullet. We live at 707 Cedar. This is my neighbor across the street. We're here looking for some type of answers, some communications with rental property. And this is our first time to come to the council meeting. I was here last week, but the council meeting did not start until about 6:30, but at that time, we was here at the wrong time. So today, they told us to make sure we be here today at 6:30. So we got here a little early. So, we weren't expected to come up to say anything, because we have not spoken to our alderman since last week, Tom. We're trying to set up our neighborhood watch right now. We're looking out for our senior citizen, and we're looking out for our, we have four children in our neighborhood, and we're looking for something to help them and the senior citizen, because where we live, there are a lot of senior citizens at Drummond subdivision, our senior citizen, and they are sick. So we're here to try to support one another. We are not going in the place, we're not selling our homes. We just want to stay where we are, and we want our neighborhood back at, on Cedar, 707 Cedar, and 708 Cedar. So after tonight, we will be talking to our alderman, Tom. And we do have some guidelines that we would like to bring up, but we didn't bring enough. We would like for these guidelines to be passed out, so you can see what type of neighborhood we want back. I've been there for about 25 years, and Artith, how long have you been there?
About 35.
35 years. And the whole while I've been there, I have never had any problems, up until last year and this year. And things are going on so bad older until we just can't, we just cannot bear it any longer, and we're just not going to tolerate the activities that they have there, and it's not a skin problem, a race, or anything like that. We just want our neighborhood back, and that's what we're going to be fighting about, is trying to take our neighborhood back, because we pay too much taxes, and the people that live next door to us, they're run total, but they don't work, and we...
For our safety, too.
For our safety, we're looking for, we have two kids in our neighborhood, which we usually don't have any children, but we're looking out for two little kids, and they cannot play outside. The senior citizen that does live there, we cannot sit outside, because we frightened that a bullet might come through us any time. We don't know, we just don't know. So, things are happening pretty bad over there, so we just need to just get in tight and see what we can do about our neighborhood. We want it back. So if our alderman, Tom, can help us, and mayor, Chief Policeman Johnny Johnson, anybody else we have talked to, attorney back there, Attorney Lynn, I talked to her last week, Monday, and I told her a few things, and she got right on it. And it's looking pretty good within a week. So I think we just keep working together, I think we get our neighborhood back. You want to say anything? That's about it? Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, and I will say that our police department, particularly Johnny, and they will work with you in helping you set up and, you know, get meetings going and, you know, kind of present an organizational structure for the neighborhood watch, and that's something that they will work with you.
I just want to say thank you for the lawyer, Lynn.
Oh. Ann Lynn?
Yeah, I met her first time. And what makes us feel so good, because people got right on it. They're all on our corners, I mean, they're with us, and we can do much more things than we're doing if we just stick together in Waukegan. And if we just pay attention where we live, at this little corner, maybe someone else can take a pattern like we're doing. But see, as homeowners, people does not think that they have any power.
Oh, that's not true.
No. So we, this is what we fight for, a decent place to live, and it's not about, as I said, it's not about scenery or color, it's not about any of that. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Alderman?
Thank you. Yes, I've talked with Ms. Bullet and Chief Greathouse, I just want to let you know that she did pass on a compliment to me about Chief Wallace and the assistance that he got for helping him to start, and he had their first meeting to set up that neighborhood watch committee. I've also wanted to talk to Mr. Hagerty, he wanted a couple other improvements that I think we can get in that neighborhood that might help the area out. I believe they have a street light that's going out, so they want that replaced, and just a couple other minor things that can be handled by the city yards. So I'm more than happy to help you out with these things, and I'm going to hold on to Tom Harry, so we can get these things accomplished, but Chief, they have paid you a compliment, and you've done a nice job, and I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, alderman. Next, we have Edith and Estella Malogen, Maligan?
They were with you.
They were with you, so they're, they're fine, then? They're all set? Okay. Then the last name appears to have been crossed out, so I believe that that concludes our public comment.
It was me.
That was you. So you're crossed out, though? You're all set, then?
Yes.
You're good.
The Republic of the United States.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right. Next up, we'll take a motion to accept the minutes of September 20th, 2010, regular meeting and executive session. I'll take a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Ayes have it. Thank you. We have nothing this evening under resolutions and proclamations. Item 7, committee reports and motions. Finance Committee, Alderman Needham, please.
He's not here.
Not here? How did I miss that? Alderman Tempest, I'm sorry. I thought he was going to be here this evening.
Yes, Your Honor. Under the Finance Committee, the motion is authorize use of bond proceeds to fund to award of a contract to Curry Motors Fleet for the purpose of fire equipment and vehicles that specify a 2011 Chevy Tahoe, an amount not to exceed $32,287, and the budget code is 307, 1307-26394.
We have a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item B on the agenda, Finance Committee, authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of contract to Harvey Communications for the purpose of fire equipment and vehicles, an amount not to exceed $14,866.90. Budget code 307, 1307-26394, and I would so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item number C from the Finance Committee, authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of contract to raise auto body for the purpose of fire equipment and vehicles, specify and painting a new vehicle with safety and communication equipment, an amount not to exceed $2,676.51. Budget code 307, 1307, 26394, and I would so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
That concludes the Finance Committee report, Your Honor.
Thank you, alderman. Next up is Public Safety Committee, Alderman Larson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety Committee met at 6:00 on September 27th. We had a quorum. Old business included a request to, request authorization to enter into, enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Waukegan Community Unit School District 60, where public safety services provided during the 2010, 2011 school year, and there is an amendment, appendix to that, should we continue the same arrangement for following years, and I so move.
We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye, and I'd like to thank Chief Dr. Batista for getting this sewed up. I thought we should have had it sewed up earlier, but hate to say it, we got attorneys involved, and you know what happens there? We're always worried about this and that, and they look out for your best interest sometimes, but sometimes, they paralyze you with too much caution, but I'm so glad that Dr. Batista and the chief were able to cut through that and get to where we needed to get to, so my vote is aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item B was under new business. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to use bond proceeds and waive the bid procedure to purchase an ambulance under the state bid and/or municipal conference bid pricing not to exceed $186,000, and a fire engine under the state bid and/or the municipal conference bid pricing not to exceed $444,000, and ISO move.
We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item C, this pertains to the type of engine that we're going to be able to use on this piece of equipment. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to waive the bid procedure and purchase NFPA standard engine equipment for a price not to exceed $35,000, and this will save a considerable amount of money over the new standards.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
The next item, the Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to change the police department's accreditation from CALEA, which is the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, which is a national organization, to ILEAP, Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program, upon expiration of the current accreditation on July 26, 2011. Essentially, this will allow our police department to follow the Illinois standards, maintain the appropriate level of accreditation, and save the city a significant amount of money, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Next item is to begin the competitive bid process for a capital improvement in our police department, specifically the jail deluge system, which is, puts out fires. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to solicit bids for the construction and technical work required to retrofit the deluge system in the jail facility, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Next item, more, police department building improvements. The Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that the proper city officials be authorized to begin the bid process for the repair and/or replacement of the police department's roof and the heating and air conditioning system, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Item G on the agenda. The Waukegan Police Department respectfully requests authorization to award a contract to CDWG in order to upgrade the department's information system hardware, software licenses, and storage equipment. The police department is currently being served by 15 servers that have reached the end of their useful life. The police department would like to purchase the necessary system, hardware, software licenses, and storage equipment by using the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Program. Funding for the purchase of the hardware, software licenses, and storage equipment will be from the Capital Improvement Bond Funds General Obligation Series C, and I so move.
We have a motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
I, Mayor, I should say that this is to exceed, estimated cost not to exceed $150,000.
And did you also include the language "authorized to waive the bid procedure"? I'm not sure in the reading that we did.
The Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, that the proper city officials be authorized to award a contract to CDWG, an authorized vendor under the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Program, contract number NIPA 4399, 200 North Milwaukee Avenue, Vernon Hills, Illinois, for the purchase of necessary system hardware, software licenses, and storage equipment at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Again, the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
That completes our committee.
Thank you, Alderman Larson. Judiciary Committee, Alderman Figueroa.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Judiciary Committee met on September 27th at 6, I think it was 6:35 PM. The following items were on the agenda for that evening. What I'd like to do with the indulgence of the council, items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, since they're all related to vacations in the same area, I'd like to take them all at the same time, and I'd like to spell them out. The members of the city council have received a copy of the ordinance for these vacations. Item A, the Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to adopt as presented an ordinance to approve the zoning calendar V-210, street vacation for the petitioner, Green Bay Crossings on Ridge Avenue, vacation of Ridge Avenue between Staben, I should say that, Stauben Avenue, that's the way he wanted it pronounced, Stauben Avenue and Comred, the Commonwealth Edison Right of Way. Item B is to the Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to adopt as presented an ordinance to approve zoning calendar V-310 for the street vacation for the petitioner, Green Bay Crossings on Darrell Avenue, vacation of Darrell Avenue between Stauben Avenue and Commonwealth Edison Right of Way. Item C, Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to adopt as presented an ordinance to approve zoning calendar V-410, street vacation petition for the petitioner, Green Bay Crossings on Dixie Avenue, vacation of Dixie Avenue between Stauben Avenue and Commonwealth Edison Right of Way. Item D, Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to adapt as presented an ordinance to approve zoning calendar V-510, street vacation for the petitioner, Green Bay Crossings on Apple Avenue, for the vacation of Apple Avenue from Stauben Avenue to 114 feet east of Birch Avenue. Item E, Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to adapt, adopt, excuse me, as presented an ordinance to adopt, to approve zoning calendar V-610, street vacation for the petitioner, Green Bay Crossings to Wood Avenue, vacation of Wood Avenue between Stauben Avenue and Commonwealth Edison Right of Way. Item F, to the Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to adapt as presented an ordinance to approve zoning calendar V-710, street vacation for the petitioner, Green Bay Crossings on Birch Avenue, vacation of Birch Avenue from Stauben Avenue to 114 feet east of Birch Avenue. And last, the Judiciary Committee recommends to adapt as presented an ordinance to approve zoning calendar V-810 for the street vacation for the petitioner, Green Bay Crossings on Stauben Avenue, vacation of Ridge Avenue between Stauben Avenue and Commonwealth Edison Right of Way. Now, the reason I ask that we take all of these at the, at once is because we had also moved in judiciary to charge, to charge the recipient of said properties, it's about 80% in the floodplain and approximately $9,000. Is that the correct, was it round figure of $9,000 that we charged for this property? It's about 80% in the floodplain. I think that's it.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to approve items A through G inclusive, under the Judiciary Committee. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.[1728.36]
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
I vote aye, and I want to thank Corporation Council for getting, you know, these papers all ready, and I appreciate these ordinance already. Appreciate that very much. I think this is going to be good for the area. For the people that are wondering where this area is, it's a development that is going to be behind the Kmart area, and it's going to be good for the entire area. So I'm very excited for this and for that area. So thank you very much. Ann Lynn. Thank you, Ann. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Alderman. The eyes have it.
Thank you. Item number H, Your Honor, has to do with adopting as presented an ordinance to approve, to approve the, amending the rental business license. Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to adopt ordinance as amended.
We have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Your Honor, what I'd like to do for the, for the, for the audience is to have Ann, Ann Lynn, I didn't see you back there. Could you be out there and give us a quick synopsis of what this has involved? It's...
You got a copy of it?
Copies were given last week.
Throw in your packet, too.
Sure. I'd be happy to give a quick synopsis of the changes. This is another refinement to the rental, residential rental housing ordinance, business license ordinance, and we've, you've amended that ordinance a number of times since 2002 when we first adopted the ordinance. In this change, two-family and single-family rental properties will be inspected every year, and after two satisfactory years of inspection passage, they will have one waiver a year. Right now, they're inspected every year for three years, and then they have two years off. So that's a, a little bit of a change. Complexes with 50 units, from now on, if this ordinance passes, will not get a waiver a year. Currently, all properties are inspected, three years in a row with satisfactory passage, they get two years off. For the very large complexes, it just did not make sense anymore to give them a waiver a year because we find that the bulk of our, those are complexes that have a high turnover rate frequently, and the bulk of our problems on the rental properties come in those areas. So giving them two years off from inspections really has posed more problems. So now, those complexes with 50 or more units will be continuously inspected, one-third of the units every year. So if there are 150 units, 50 will be inspected each year, a different 50 each year, no waiver a year. From now on, if this ordinance passes, all licenses and inspection fees will be billed by the Collector's Office at the same time as they bill all business licenses, which is December 1st for the January 1 year. Previously, our rental licenses and inspection fees had been billed at the time of the inspection. And each rental property has a different inspection month usually. It's staggered throughout the year. So from now on, the billing will occur in the Collector's Office at the same time as all other business licenses, but then they will have their inspections as determined by the building and Code Enforcement Department. And finally, the last change was just an increase in fees on the, the business license amount for complexes between 11 and 100 units. Those had previously been billed at $175 a year just for the license fee, not the inspection per-unit fees, that's a separate charge. But buildings that have 10 units were billed $25 a unit, so they were actually being paid more. So that, they were paying more. So that was an anomaly that we are correcting in this, and those are the changes for this year.
Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. Ann?
Yes.
If I may ask again, you said 10 units or more, the cost is what, if you have a 10-unit building?
Up to 10 units. It has been $25 a unit. So a 10-unit building would pay a license fee of $250. They also pay an inspection fee per unit, but that's a separate amount.
And 250 is for what, for the entire building?
Right, up to 10 units. But then...
If I have a eight-unit, it's 250.
No, it's $25 a unit.
A unit.
Yes.
And then when we inspect, another cost?
$20 per unit that's inspected for that year.
And we're going to inspect what percent again?
Thirty-three and a third. A third.
So if I have eight, a unit of eight, that doesn't come out with thirds, does it?
Well, it doesn't. So what we do is, in the first year, what we have done is inspect three, the next year three, the third year we inspect two. Right. Yeah.
Make sure I got the formula right.
Right.
Didn't know if your math was real good or...
No, it's not too good.
I'm teasing you. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Figueroa.
Oh, no, I just wanted to make sure that we get that, now we can have the roll call vote.
Okay. Again, motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. The last item, well, second to last, it says the last item's on the agenda. It's the Corporation Council draft a PACE add shelter agreement. That was in our packets. We did approve it in judiciary, that agreement. Did everybody get a copy of that? Because I didn't bring my copy with me. Ann, did you bring your copy? Could you give us, give us a real quick, or was that, Russ, was that you? Yeah, would, please. We have an agreement with another supplier of, that's not in there.
And the chain is merely to reflect, they no longer have the style of shelter that was alluded to in the last ordinance, so this reflects the new style. It's as simple as that.
And then also for the, the city will be sharing in the revenues on the advertisement, the advertisement in the shelters, and that they have to maintain those shelters clean.
That is still the case, yes.
Yeah, that's the, so we have a new company that we're, we're...
They're working with a new company for the shelters, yes.
Yes, the Judiciary Committee then, but that, that was, that agreement was all written up, and we approved that in judiciary.
The ordinance has been drafted.
So the Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to adopt the new agreement with PACE as presented.
Okay. Now... Well, what we have down here is Corporation Council, it's a motion to ask Corporation Council to draft the PACE add shelter agreement.
I know, that's what's in the agenda, but we approved it in committee. That was already approved. We could, what we could do is, is, does all, did all the Aldermen see that copy? Yeah, we, we did.
No. Why don't we...
Okay, we can't pass it if it's not...
Not in this one.
Okay, well, why don't we do the following? Direct the Corporation Council, then Judiciary Committee, direct the Corporation Council to draft the, the agreement between, with PACE. You can review the one as, as presented. I don't know who drafted that. I think it was...
Who drafted the, who drafted the ordinance?
That has been drafted at this point, or has not?
It has been drafted. We, we approved the ordinance as...
You approved it in committee.
In committee.
And that came out of...
And it came out of Russ's...
Russ, you drafted the ordinance?
No, it was a, an agreement.
Or the agreement?
Yeah, it was just, this slide change we talked about. It can be held over. We can, we can wait until the...
I think we'll have to give them the language that's on there tonight.
Okay, why don't I just say that, have the Corporation, the Judiciary Committee recommend it, and I so, to have the Corporation Council review the agreement, and we can't hold it over if it's not a motion, if it's not there.
That's good.
So have the Corporation Council review that agreement, and we'll see it in two weeks.
Okay, that's fine. We have the motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to have Corporation Council review the agreement and return it in two weeks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Now, under Old Business, which is, I believe, a continuation of your committee then?
No, just, real quick, it's not, it wasn't under for action, but you had requested the Judiciary Committee to look into the jaywalking issue in the city of Waukegan. We met with the police chief, and we, what we have done is asked the Corporation Council, well, Corporation Council wasn't there that evening, but Judiciary Committee recommends that we can make a motion, but asked the Corporation Council to review the state statute to incorporate it into the city statute to make it all...
Complacent.
Easy, easier for us to, to control the jaywalking in the streets, so the police, and we can do that through adjudication court. So that's, that's, we did discuss that in judiciary.
Okay.
We don't have any action on that.
And they'll return that to your committee then? Okay, very good. Item, and now under Old Business, item 8. Item A, which I believe Tony would be back to you again, the ordinance to approve the conditional use permit for the daycare at 1800 Longview. Alderman Figueroa, if you'd like to address that.
Yes, Your Honor, that was last, in the last agenda, and it hadn't been printed, written up yet, right?
No.
Well, somebody held it over then.
Yeah, several months ago.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it's a conditional use permit. Everybody has a copy of it in their, in their packets? The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to, to approve the conditional use permit for the daycare center at 1800 Longview.
We have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, excuse me a moment. Seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Okay, the eyes have it. Thank you. No items under Communications to address. Item 10, new business slash recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approved payroll dated September 22, 2010, the amount of $1,312,817.20. A motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Item B, approved bills dated October 4, 2010, in the amount of $1,471,159.96. Motion, motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Thank you. Do we have any requests for block parties before us this evening? No requests. Item D, monthly report, we accept the monthly report from the Treasurer's Office with the month of August 2010. Item E, authorize the Building Department to go out for bids pursuant to City Code Section 2-458I-11 for the demolition of 34 North Sheridan Road and 33 South Genesee Street, both of which are currently in the fast-track demolition process. Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you. Item F. Pardon? Item F has been requested to be held over pending some apparent changes necessary to the lease before it's brought before City Council.
Did we vote on D to receive...
Which one is that, Alderman?
Item D, monthly report.
Yes, yes, we did.
Received and filed. All votes?
Say that one more time. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Again, item D, motion to accept the monthly report from the Treasurer's Office with the month of August 2010. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. My apologies. Now, we will go to ordinances and resolutions. Item 11. Item A, approve, Alderman Figueroa, would you like to read these items since the majority of them actually would come through your committee? Would you prefer to read them?
I have no problem.
Okay, please, go ahead.
These were passed in committee, and item A has approved zoning calendar 2297 for the petitioner, Edward Amenino, located at 1012 Washington Street, that's actually in, in my ward, across the street from the high school, for the conditional use permit for a car detailed establishment.
Could you do each one, vote on each one?
Sure, absolutely. Item A, we have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest, it was my intention to do each one separately, so. Item B, it's the approval of zoning calendar 2298 for the petitioner, no, excuse me, let me go, 22, 2298 for the petitioner, Norma Hiron, located at 1300 North Jackson, conditional use permit for an auto repair facility. That's an Alderman Tempest's word.
May I hold that over, please?
Certainly.
I'll tell you why, as I'm reading this, I see, when I went through the Development Commission, it was five in favor, three against it. I'd like to read that report once more. I know they've got a lot of restrictions on it, but would, I guess I could ask Russ, would two weeks, would two weeks hurt this going forward at all? No? Okay, then, I don't want to...
Thank you, Alderman, and that'll be held over to the next City Council meeting.
I'd just like to, I do read what the Development Commission reports, and I did not do that, Mayor. I'm remiss. Thank you.
Now, item C, approved zoning calendar 2299 for the petitioner, Geraldo Medrano, located at 2755 Washington Street. It's a conditional use permit for a banquet facility. This is an Alderman Rivera's word.
We have the motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Alderman Rivera, this, I mean, the last one we had in there that we had to take care of was supposed, was a banquet facility that turned into a catastrophe. We have, this just going to be a banquet facility, as a traditional banquet facility? Do we know? I'm just being curious, because I know, the last one, I think we got sort of bamboozled on, and next thing you know, we got half the station over there every Friday night.
You know, we went through all that questioning, we set the conditions, and, you know...
As long as you know I'm back.
They know, they know how serious we are, and...
Okay.
And if they don't abide by the conditions that we set forth, the license can be pulled.
Thank you.
So, you know, there's no, no question about that.
Yeah, this is the old Moose Lodge, and we put them on a very short leash, leash. It's a 90-day review, and Police Chief have a, put a very close eye on them. The General was in here, and he knew what we're, he really, really agreed with all the conditions that we're setting forth, and, oh, we got them on a short leash.
you know, we got half the station over there every Friday night, because there was just problems after problems. But that's not the type of business we want anywhere in the city of Waukegan, but as long as we have restrictions and we've gone over it, that's all, thank you.
I want the same thing you do.
I know, I know, I know. It was a headache for both of us, the one before.
All right, that's a good point, Alderman, glad you brought that up.
Item D.
Did we do the vote already?
Yeah, item D.
And also. Item D, approved zoning calendar.
Alderman Rivera.
I want to thank Amy, and I know, you know, I want to, I appreciate that you got this all done for today's meeting. Thank you.
Okay, item D, approved zoning calendar V-1-10, is a street vacation located at 206 Southwest Street. Vacation of a portion of West Street, just south of vacated Lake Street. And that's in the first ward.
We have a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
The other items, Your Honor, did not go through judiciaries, so if you. There's a public safety, the handicap parking.
Okay, fine. Alderman Larson, if you'd like to pick up with item E, please.
Thank you. Item E, to reflect handicap parking only in front of the residence commonly known as 418 Powell Avenue. Can I so move?
Alderman Larson, would you describe this as an ordinance change?
It's amendment to allow handicap parking in front of those residents due to a medical situation.
We have the motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
If I may comment on that.
Alderman Tempest.
Because I've done this in my ward. We put handicap parking spaces sometimes, and with that, a need is no longer needed, like they move. I think the Alderman should kind of keep track and make sure it's removed. I've done that in my ward a number of times, and, you know, the neighbors appreciate it too, because they know they've got a handicap sign sticking in front of that house, but it's no longer needed there, so we should make sure as Alderman, then it comes back out. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
And these next two items are neighborhood stabilization issues, Mayor.
Okay.
I think you can.
I'll pick up with item F. To authorize the purchase of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program, including 1706 Lydia Street. Accept a motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Larson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item G, authorize the purchase of property by the city of Waukegan pursuant to the neighborhood stabilization program, including 520 Baldwin Avenue. Motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Thank you, the ayes have it. Now we will go to Alderman's time. Following that, we will go into executive session. And following Alderman's time, I will accept a motion by an Alderman in a second and vote to go into executive session. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
You know, I'd like to talk about the service centers in our neighborhood, you know, in my area, and I think this might be consistent with First, Third, and Sixth. We have these old service centers, which are somewhat grandfathered on how they're governed. One in particular, Belvedere and Lincoln. You know, I've heard some pretty conventional things as, or conditions put on, on these new service centers as they come up, but it, I find it, it's being somewhat difficult for us to control or monitor some of the older service centers in our neighborhoods. And they're just, they're absolutely, they're just crippling, you know, some of the old neighborhoods that, very quiet and, you know, good, nice, solid homes over there. They're, they're just out of control. They're out of control. And I guess I would like to see Ann Lynn and Corporation Council, see if we can amortize some of those old, some of the new conditions until some of these older service centers. The example is, these guys just don't have the room. They just don't have the room, you know, to do their business anymore, but because they're grandfathered, it's difficult for us to really monitor them or put some good, hard enforcement on them. And I use the example in Alderman Larson's ward, where he was able to curtail the one service center to, can't have the cars over 30 days, and some other things. It's difficult to do that with these old neighborhood joints. And, you know, as they come up, they become good mechanics, they get the word out, they're going to get the business, it's just, you know, that's the way it is. But how do we move from what we're doing today to transition over to some of these old neighborhood service centers? I mean, they're just, they're crippling neighborhoods, particularly in my area, on 500 block of Lincoln. You know, these are middle-class families, working-class families, a lot of retired personnel over there, residents. But on a daily basis, I bet we're writing about 50 to 100 tickets, if not a week, 300 or 400 a month. That's just not effective way of doing things. So I, I'm going to ask Ann and the Corporation Council to see, can we amortize what we're doing on some of the new service restrictions, service center restrictions, and transition that over to some of the old neighborhood joints? Because the complaints, I mean, every day I can get a call, and I know communications, and I think it used to be Goosman who gets a call from four or five people on that block, and it's, and it is, it's just nasty the way it looks. Public Works can't, they can't come through and, you know, with the sweepers because cars are in the way from their service center, on the other block, they got cars packed. We simply have to do something. And what really struck me is what Alderman Larson did in his ward, I thought it was very creative, but I've been trying to find a way, how do we, how can I transition that over to the old neighborhood, and without hurting them, in a sense. The goal is not to hurt them, but, you know, we gotta find a different way of doing this. So we, we can't, it gotta be a win-win for everybody, not just, you know, for them. I know the service centers, they're tired of getting tickets. The customers, they're getting tickets, so it's just, it's gotta be another way that we can really get our message across for every, so it benefits the entire community over there. Sounds like Corporation Council has an idea.
Alderman, I was just going to ask if you would take me to a couple of these locations so I can see them?
Okay.
Would that be possible? That would help me to figure out what to do about them. So if you maybe call my office when you have a chance, we'll set up a time and we'll go out and tour them.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you very much. My second thing is, this idea came to me from a person who's doing adjudication, part of adjudication court in North Chicago. And it involves our seizure ordinance. And I've been a strong advocate of this, that I thought that $500 was way too much money to be putting burdens on families. But in talking with her, she kind of alluded that our ordinance says $500, period. So if there is a situation where Junior has taken Mom's car, or Mom has asked Junior or little sis, the daughter to go to the store, and, you know, something is happening, we would have to hit them for that $500 total. I understand it's about compliance, I understand it's about the law, I get that. But there must be, there are situations where that $500 does not fit the goal we're trying to achieve in Waukegan. Considering the economic times that exist in our society, I would like for us to do what we're doing in our own adjudication court. In our adjudication court, if I'm not mistaken, it says up to 750 or 500, I don't know, is it 750 or 500? Up to, that means the person who is administering, the adjudication officer, has an option to say up to, meaning they can go from 50 to 100 to 200, up to that particular point. I know, in the past, it has been that we want to send a strong message. I think we've been able to achieve that in Waukegan. Our own statistics tells us that accidents are down. Our own statistics say that. There must, we must give some discretion right now to our officers, to the adjudication court, what we've put into the reason, the reason we went to this particular ordinance, two reasons, compliance, better understanding of the laws that exist in our, in our state, and to let people know you cannot drive illegally. We've done a great job of doing that. Now it's time for us to get back into what we, I think is in the best interest of the Waukegan residents. Particularly, and I say this, for those who, you know, they're hitting it, they're trying to do the best that they can on a daily basis, folks. And sometimes, it's just going to happen. I forget to pay that insurance for, oops, I forgot, but unfortunately for our officers, this is all we have. I think we should put this idea saying up to, not just a mere 500. Other cities are doing it, using our own ordinance that we put out, other people are following it. Now I think it's a time for us to follow kind of some of what they're doing. And if it's a repeat offender, we have the mechanisms to do that. If you've been in front of our adjudication officer two or three times, you're not getting the message. Pay the fine and go home. But there are situations where our adjudication officer has no other means except to punish them for $500. Your Honor, I'd like to see that put back in committee, and don't stay in committee, let's talk about it and make a decision on it. It is necessary, I think it is, it is the right thing to do at this point in time. Thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that the ladies that spoke today, Ms. Lane and Mrs. Bullett, they came on here to talk about their neighborhood and their interest in their neighborhood, and to emphasize the fact that they're not going anywhere, it's their neighborhood, and I want to commend them for doing the right things. They contacted the police department, they contacted Ann Lynn to find out about rental agreements, they even contacted me to make sure, to see what could be done here in the city. And it's just an example of neighbors getting together to make sure their own neighborhood stays safe, and I think they're an example for everybody in the entire city, and ladies, you did a nice job, and I hope everything, we're going to work to make sure everything works out. The only other item I have is, for everybody, voter registration deadline is coming up. You can't be heard if you don't vote. If you are not registered to vote, the deadline's coming up, get registered and then vote come November. Thank you.
It was today, Tom.
Oh, it was today? Well, then, I'm sorry, we're too late.
Alderman Moiseo.
A couple things, Alderman Conkin brings us to my attention, the ladies that came up there, we've all had this problem where we have renters in our respected wards who can't behave. I thought we had a nuisance fine, am I right, Chief or Corporation Council? If you're called to the same residence time and time again, don't we have another way of, excessive use of force, is that, or excessive use of services? Do we have, do we have that or not? I thought we did. Was anybody, where, if the police are continually called to the same residence, it becomes an excessive use of services? I thought we had that.
Not yet.
Not yet? We need that. I mean, because I'm sure the chief can probably pick out the top 20 places that his officers go to, and it's the same, as my favorite word, the same ne'er-do-wells who can't act right. And the only way to get them is, you're not so much maybe going to get them, but you're going to get the landlord, you can get in their pocket, and make the landlord make them behave. Along those lines, this may be controversial, but Newt had mentioned a lease tax. I've talked to some people that own property in Waukegan, and they said that, that would kill them, they're barely making any money. Now, I'm talking about small potatoes, guys, I'm not talking about people that have a lot of property. Well, we, Alderman Tempest has talked about it, Alderman Larson has talked about it, about the inordinate number of Section 8 vouchers that come to Waukegan. How about a lease tax on Section 8? Get in the federal government's pocket. These guys rent to Section 8 because it's guaranteed money. Talk to them. I know, I don't know some guys personally that, but they don't, a lot of these guys that own property, that rent to Section 8 people, that just turn it over and over and over, they don't care who lives there, they don't live in Waukegan. They don't care what Section 8 people come in, and I'm not trying to lump all Section 8 people in the same basket. Some of them are great, some of them turn out and they do what they're supposed to do, and the program works. But we all talked about the inordinate number that we get in Waukegan. How about a Section 8 lease tax? Now, that may not be legal, that's what we have you up here, and I know it probably is not legal, but I'm just putting it out there, because the federal government doesn't seem to care who, who they allow people to rent to. Maybe we, if we get in the federal government's pocket, or that landlord's pocket, they'll be a little bit more apt to screen the people that they rent to. And the last thing, again, I'd be remiss if I did not say that Mr. Grimes is correct, this has been the best start of school at the high school in my 20 years there. I've been critical of the high school since I worked there, but for the first time in 20 years, we started a program called Start On Time. I have to thank Sonny Garza, he's in the audience right now, and the other school board members, that have finally understood that we have to get kids where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be there, doing what they're supposed to be doing. And it's cut down on almost all of the monkey business that happens at the high school. So I would be remiss if I did not say that that has worked, it's been the best start to the 20 years that I've been there, by far, it's been the best start. And I want to thank everybody that's worked hard on that and making that happen, because as the mayor said, and we all know up here, as the school goes, so does the community. And I think we're trying to work together a little bit better in making things happen. Thank you.
Alderman Figueroa.
Thank you, Your Honor. Since Alderman Cunningham brought up the seizure ordinance, and I echo what he said, I totally agree with this, but one thing that, it's always bothered me, is that husband and wife going on the street, they're driving, and for whatever reason, there's a lot of reasons that one of the other person's license has been suspended. There's a lot of reasons. And unbeknownst to that person, their license, they're driving with a suspended driver's license. Now, I'm not talking about a driver's license who's been revoked due to drunk driving. I don't think that person should be driving at all. I'm talking about if a person's license has been suspended for whatever reason. His wife has a good driver's license, let her drive the car home. Give him a ticket so he can resolve the issue with the license. This has bothered me since we passed the seizure ordinance, like, if we're going to look at the $500 fine, let's look at this also. And that's all, Your Honor.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to bring up the issue tonight of a lot of the dogs running loose in the areas. I witnessed it myself, and I've had some of my constituents call me on it, email me on it, that there's a lot of pit bulls and other larger dogs that are running around loose away from the owners. I've witnessed even smaller dogs walking around, and people don't know, you know, they'll tell you, the owners will tell you, well, they don't bite, but people that come up on them, they don't know that they won't bite. And I know that we have an ordinance in place that states that if your animal is out of your home, it's supposed to be on a leash. If you're walking that animal, it's supposed to be on a leash. And I did speak briefly with Ann Lynn regarding our ordinance. I know that there's some penalties in place for if the animal mauls a person, but is there a penalty in place if this pit bull or whatever, larger dog, doesn't matter what kind it is, mauls another dog? Do we have any penalties in place for that? Can anybody answer that?
Yeah, we do.
We do? Can you, can you address that, Chief? And how do we, I know that a lot of times you're preaching to the choir, if anyone sees, goes online and watches the council meeting and hears this message, they know pretty much what the ordinances are, but how do you reach those that break the ordinance, break the laws? You know, they don't care, or they, you know, I'll give them the benefit of a doubt, maybe they don't know that there's an ordinance that you have to have your pet on a leash anytime they're out of your home, even if they're in your yard, I understand that they're supposed to still be on a leash, is that correct?
Yes, we have a pretty good ordinances that address dogs running at large, and that's essentially what you're talking about, dogs running at large, as well as ordinances with vicious dogs or dangerous dogs. And part of the issue, like all issues with enforcing the laws, is that you have to get the message out there that they understand the laws, and also get the message out there by the witnesses of the people that are violating the laws, that they contact the police and let us know. And a lot of these situations where there's neighborhoods where they're constantly seeing a dog running loose, we receive several calls, or our animal control does, that a particular dog's running loose, and then the neighbor calls and lets us know where this person, dog's running loose, and then the neighbor calls and lets us know where this person, the owner, lives. And then we send animal control and they impound the dog. But we have pretty good fees and fines for that, for impound once, twice, or how many times we need to do it, and there are times when we actually pull the dog. But your question in reference to a dog where it mauls or bites another animal, do we have vicious and dog biting ordinances that cover that? We can very easily impound a dog and have it held, and if necessary, have the dog euthanized if there's more than one attack on another animal. When there's an attack on an actual human being, the threshold is not as high, so it's relatively easy.
And I'd like to get out to the residents in the community, if you know of a dog that's running loose and you know that address, because like when I was out, I didn't know who the dog belonged to. It was two or three of them, small, little chihuahuas or whatever. You don't know who they belong to, but people that live there in the neighborhood, they know who the dogs belong to, so they should get in touch with the Alderman Call, the Animal Control, and let them know who's allowing their pets to run loose, and then that way we can address the issue. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
You know, I'd like to add something to that if I might, Alderman. And I think one of the issues that we have in Waukegan was people tethering their dogs and keeping them tethered outside all day, or tethering them in the front yard where they're actually able to reach the sidewalk. And I think that that's something that we will have to look into as well as far as ordinances and enforcement. But I think your point is very well put.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I don't want to harp on that, but Chief, he knows my feelings on that. If it's up to me, I'd pass an ordinance that you couldn't tether a dog right now. How would you like to tie yourself up for eight hours on a tree? And then they wonder why they turned vicious. Let me handle that situation. I'll take care of that.
Alderman Tempest?
Yeah, well, I'll start out with dogs, because I probably spend more time at the animal shelter than anybody. And by the way, we do have a wonderful animal shelter right next to Public Works on McCree Road. If any of you, some people in this community doesn't know, we have an animal shelter. It's very well maintained, we have a wonderful staff there that takes care of the animals. And one of the services we offer is Parfol Shot, and also we give a chip in the dog where they can scan the dog and say, this belongs to Larry Tenpass, what's he doing here? I didn't know Larry had this dog too, but the chip will let you do it. And they do it for a very nominal fee. And I would encourage anybody to make use of that ability, get that done in the city. If your dog's ever lost, we do have an animal shelter that you ought to check at to see if he's been impounded, because many times we find dogs and they stay there a week and nobody comes to claim them, and there's no chip in them, so we have no idea. But we send them on to the Orphans of the Storm after holding them for a number of days. But we do have a wonderful animal shelter, and I think some citizens don't realize what a great shelter we have. Going back to Alderman Cunningham bringing up the towing ordinance, I think we need to look at that again. I think he's absolutely right. I think the idea of officer discretion is very important, and I think the present ordinance doesn't allow for that. The Section 8 tax, don't know if we can do it. But I've asked the Corporation Counsel, I talked to a former city planner by the name of Tom Vick, and he feels that we have a federal case against a city like Chicago that is knocking down all their public housing and giving the voucher and sending them up the ladder. And I would ask the Corporation Counsel to maybe get ahold of Mr. Vick, he may have some more information, and see if we do have some legal resource on the number of Section 8s that we're getting in Waukegan. A lot of those people are good people, but you know, how many can you absorb? And I guess if you have too many have-nots, it's very difficult for the city to continue on. The other thing I want to talk about was high school. You mentioned that. I happened to go over there the other day. I didn't realize I was in the same high school. It was so good. Seriously, I mean, I was there a year ago, and I was embarrassed. Kids walking down the hallway, I would have went crazy when I was teaching, walking down the hallway, not going to class, just walking around like they owned the place. I couldn't believe what I saw, but I went back this year and wow, they got things under control.
You wonder why I had that first heart attack.
Yeah, that helped you. I'm sure it helped you most. I'm sure. It set me off just going over, I said, well, I'm retired, I don't have to go. So Sonny's on the board, aren't you, Sonny?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Pit bulls, I talked about, oh, leaf pickup. You know, I've got to talk about this a little bit, because we got our leaf schedule that just came out today. Starts on Monday, October 25th, and I see some people in my ward raking the leaves to the curb. Guys, put them in a plastic yard waste bag right now, there's not that many, or put them in a bag. They're not going to start with the machines until the 28th. And even then, I ask you at the end, near the end, when you're getting close to Thanksgiving, when the snow starts flying, and we don't get them all picked up. So many times, if you can put them in a bag or put them in a barrel, it's much easier for Brownie Onyx, no, to pick them up rather than have the city workers go through there. We've cut down on the number of city working parties that we have, and it's going to be a little bit more difficult if everybody chips in and rake them and bag them, many of them. There are some places I know it's impossible, a lot of little areas, there's not that many. Rake them up and put them in a bag and let Onyx pick them up. They're being paid for it. And what else did I want to talk about? I've got the towing, leaf pickup, Section 8, federal thing. Mr. Vick? That's it, Your Honor. I write little notes.
Just about everything.
What I want to cover.
Alderman Larson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing the conversation about Section 8, I asked Ann Lynn at our last committee meeting to investigate the rental fees and see if we could have a two-tiered approach to those multi-unit housing owners with the idea that those that don't live in Waukegan and don't understand the needs of Waukegan that own these properties, I think it's fair to say, may not be on top of the situation, as well as those many fine building owners that do live in Waukegan. And I feel that it might be appropriate to have a two-tiered approach to the fees on that basis, because by and large, I think it's fair to say that if you live in Waukegan, keep an eye on your property, there is less problems for the city of Waukegan. So I asked Ann Lynn to investigate that two-tiered approach. I think it is appropriate and justifiable to do so. Neighborhood watch program. Appreciate the ladies showing up tonight to talk about their neighborhood. It is your neighborhood. Same situation happened by McCall School in my ward. Elderly lady called a week or so ago, just concerned that she wasn't sure that people were aware of the situation in her neighborhood with people going up and down the streets after curfew and it not being attended to properly. I asked the chief and sent Johnny Johnson over there, which he did literally the next day. These ladies called me, there's more than one of them, and it got together and are so pleased to know what their rights are and that their needs are being responded to. So Chief, I mentioned it earlier, but tell Johnny that he's got a couple new girlfriends out there. So, job well done. Last but not least for tonight, Waukegan Main Street has their annual meeting this Wednesday, the 6th, at the Yacht Club. Kickoff and registration starts at 11:30. We have an election of officers. This is an annual event. If you've ever been to that luncheon, our fine executive director will tell you all the wonderful things that Waukegan Main Street has accomplished over the last year and our plans for the future. We are undergoing quite a change on the board. I'd like to mention, because some of you are friends with these people, that they've stepped up and decided to offer their services to the board, and hopefully they'll all be elected this Wednesday. They include Brendan Alviani, Nadine Burleson, Enid Rivera, Terretosch, Tom O'Connell, Bob Sobel, Archie Castaneda, Brian Smith, and yours truly, I'm in for another term. So anyhow, Wednesday at the Yacht Club, 11:30. Show up, it's a good lunch, and you'll hear about a lot of the positive things going on in Waukegan and downtown specifically. Thank you very much.
And I want to add that Heidi Kurtz from Art Space will be the guest speaker at the luncheon.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, Alderman Larson gave me a flyer here, Veterans Day, which is coming up Thursday, November the 11th. The parade starts at 10:30 in the morning, Grand to Genesee. There'll be a ceremony at 11:11 a.m. at Westin Washington. And then there's a Veterans Day luncheon over at the Christ Church right here next door, 410 Grand Avenue, so hopefully we can see everybody there. It's the 60th anniversary as well of the Korean War, so, thank you. Your Honor, I too have, I have some complaints myself. I've had several calls from the area of where the bus company is at. I continue to get calls. It hasn't stopped. One of the issues is, of course, the noise, and I know everyone has heard about that. I don't know if our noise ordinance, do we have an industrial noise ordinance as well? Is that part of the noise ordinance? Industrial noise? And would that be considered industrial?
You know, I think we'll have to, we'll have to, we'll have to talk with counsel and see, you know, what that is, and talk to Russ. I did ask him to take, as well as our police department, to take a look at some of the violations that were going on. So it's something that we have not ignored, we are watching it.
Well, we're watching it, but I keep on getting the calls. The other area, which I had mentioned before, was the buses, you know, and this is not a classics issue. Now it becomes an issue of the bus company. I don't know if the administration is not letting these people know what the conditions are, you know, there's a lack of communication, but they continue to use Hollis Avenue. Hollis Avenue, and I mentioned it before, I want to see that road. It used to be a dead-end street, and I want it to go back to a dead-end street. It's not a road that's according to our specs, you know, they have pavement grindings there. I need that road closed, because they keep on taking a right, and I don't see the problem. You know, obviously, it's not a road to our specs, so I'm asking that we close that road. And I can't see why not. And I've already spoken to our Director of Public Works, and he agrees with me. He just needs the word, you know, just, you know, the approval to get it closed, because that's a problem there. And that road's in bad shape as it is. Terrible shape. And now we have these buses going through there. So, you know, we need to take care of that. Also, there's been a few accidents as well involving the buses in that area too as well. So, you know, this company, their administration, needs, they need to get, you know, in communication with their drivers, you know, because they're not listening, and it's a public safety issue. So, that's one of the things that I wanted to bring up today. Definitely close Hollis Avenue. I also want to mention, you know, public safety, and I truly support our police department, especially the gang crime units and the drug net units. They continue to do a tremendous job. We need to really support the gang crime unit especially, you know, with the issues that have been going on. There's been some problems, I know in my ward, that I'm very concerned about, but I know it was definitely taken care of over these past couple of weeks. But we definitely, definitely, you know, as a city council, you know, I know we've had our cuts, but that's an area that it's important that we continue to support. I'd hate for us to really cut back in these gang crime units and the drug net units, because hey, you're talking public safety here. And we need to keep control of these gangs coming into this community. So I support it, and I'm quite sure everyone here supports these units as well. But again, thank you, Your Honor, for letting me speak on those issues. And also, I wanted to, I know, I know Mrs. Lane, her son works with me over at the Merritt Club. The Lane family has been in this town forever, so they're a good family, good family. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Real quick, before we make the motion to go into executive session, I just want to review a couple of announcements. First off, the Special Recreational Services of Northern Lake County is holding a resource fair on Thursday, October 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Belvedere Recreation Center at 412 South Lewis Avenue. It's their second one in a row. On Friday, October 8th, at 8:00 p.m. at the Genesee Theater, we have Last Comic Standing, the live tour. The show again starts at 8 o'clock. I believe this is a part of an NBC TV series. October 8th, 9th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 22nd, and 23rd, Death of a Salesman, a play by Arthur Miller, is being performed at the Lynn Shornick Theater at 39 Jack Benny Drive. The 8:00 p.m. curtain, except for the 17th, which is a 3:00 p.m. matinee. Adults are $20, senior military 15, students are 10. The Coalition to Reduce Recidivism, the No More Victims Seventh Annual Luncheon. Honorary Chairman Congressman Danny K. Davis will be appearing, that's Friday, October 15th, 2010. 11:30 a.m. to 12:00 is a silent auction and networking. 12:00 to 1:30 is a luncheon and program. Lakim, The Gifts from Jewish Composers, Saturday, or Sunday, October 24th, 2010, at 4:00 p.m. The Trap Auditorium at Waukegan High School, being performed by the Waukegan Symphony Orchestra. The Genesee Theater has film scheduled. The 15th of October is Gremlins, the 22nd of October is Interview with the Vampire, and Ray Bradbury's Something Wicked This Way Comes is Saturday, the 30th, at 7:00. Waukegan's Trick or Treat is Sunday, October 31st, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And as was mentioned before, Veterans Day, Thursday, November 11th, parade at 10:30, kicking off at Grand to Genesee. Ceremony 11:11 a.m. at Westin Washington. Now, take a motion by Alderman Moiseo.
Mayor? Mayor? One more thing I forgot to mention.
Yes, Alderman.
It's very important. The Lions Club, Little Four Lions Club, it's our candy date fundraiser this weekend, will be at several sites throughout the city. Please support that lionism, you know, it goes for diabetes awareness, for blindness, so it's a good thing, and it's going to be this weekend, Friday and Saturday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Now, take a motion by Alderman Moiseo, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to go into executive session to cover settlement of claims, real estate negotiations pertaining to possible development. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham, Alderman Conken, Alderman Moiseo, Alderman Figaroa, Alderman Newsom, Alderman Tempest, Alderman Larson, Alderman Vera.
Aye.
Okay. Eyes have it, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes this evening's business. What we will do is come back into session and adjourn.
At the time he got married, he got a claim.
That's why I fish more than golf.
Sit over here, hold on to your papers, hold on to my space.
Go back and...
You ready?
Yep.
Motion to come back into regular session by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Tempest, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Good night, ladies and gentlemen.